Commissioner David Ashwood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord Pritchett, please watch over this commission as we do the work for the city and the citizens. Keep us steadfast and strong in our mission to do the best that we can for all citizens in the community. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, call the meeting order. First thing on the agenda will be our consent agenda from our meetings at a regular commission meeting on 10 seats. Did everybody have a chance to look those over?
I was looking over. I didn't see any problem. I'm making motion to be approved this time.
We have a motion from Commissioner Thursby. You have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Ashwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. It's five to zero. Fort St. Joe redevelopment. We have a report today.
Bill said he didn't have anything.
All right. We're running along with our city attorney.
First thing I've got is Resolution 2015-8. And this involves the Gulf County Local Mitigation Strategy. And we just need a vote to approve this resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vasquez. Second by Commissioner Thursby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next item, ordinance 518, 519. This is the second reading of the order to write ordinances.
We never did.
We moved it through the budget. We had the first reading. We never had a second reading.
Do we need a motion?
Motion to read.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Thursby. Second by Commissioner McCron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Ordinance number 518, an ordinance at the city of Fort St. Joe, Florida, amending ordinance 472, establishing new base rates by customer classification, establishing a new volume charge, establishing new annual adjustments to the base rates and volume charges, providing for appeal of all ordinances or parts, ordinances in conflict herewith, providing severability, providing for an effective date. Ordinance 519, an ordinance at the city of Fort St. Joe, Florida, amending ordinance 473, establishing new base rates by customer classifications, establishing a new volume charge, establishing new annual adjustments to the base rate and volume charges, providing for appeal of all ordinances or parts, ordinances in conflict herewith, providing severability, providing for an effective date. We need a motion to.
Motion by Commissioner Thursby. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. It's five to zero.
Ordinance 520, this is, has come to you from the PDRB. And with their recommendation that we amend our land development regulations that's set out in this ordinance. We can do one or two or three things. We can read by title tonight. And then advertise it for adoption, probably at the second meeting in November. You can tell me to go ahead and advertise it. We'll read it at the next meeting. You can table it. You can do whatever you want to.
Where did this come from?
PDRB. Considered this issue, and this, this kind of got here in a little bit of a strange way. The PDRB is your, is your local planning agency. And anything to do with comp plan or the land development regulations is supposed to start with them. And they were concerned about this issue. It was a fairly simple issue, and so I just went ahead and put their thoughts into the form of, of an ordinance. We wouldn't normally do that. If they wanted you to, if they wanted to consider something, they would, it would get on their agenda. They'd consider it, recommend it to you, and then you'd tell me whether or not to write an ordinance. But this is an unusual situation that we maybe got cart before the horse just a little bit.
Well, see, my, my only thing with this is that somebody has their house, and they want to put a kind of lien to them inside of their house to cover up a boat or whatever. This isn't stopping them from doing that?
It, it says that you can't have one of these structures in your side yard unless you have a privacy case.
Have we got any problems? Where'd this come from?
This came, this came from the above ground swimming pool.
That's right. And state law trunks on the pools in the front yard, do they not? I thought it, we didn't go by state law. They say if you got a pool in front of your yard, as long as you don't leave the ladder where people can get into it, it's legal. What I was told on the front issue last year.
Different issues. I mean, if, if you have a pool, you have to comply with the state law.
Right.
But if local ordinance says you have to put your pool in the backyard, that's certainly enforceable by local government.
You know, I don't think any of us would like our neighbor to put an aluminum storage shed in the front yard.
Well, this thing means side yard too?
Yeah, I can understand that.
It says the side yard too?
Yeah, I have a problem with the side yard.
My thing is. What's the definition of the side yard?
The side of your house.
Well, it's defined in the, in the LDR.
So if it's an LDR, we're okay.
If you draw a line from the front corner of your house to the side lot line, going back is the side yard. We want to make sure we have that.
Well, I guess tonight we'll probably end up voting on this, but I just want to say this about the whole ordinance is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I've known, unless somebody tells me different, we still live in America. Jim, this is not a problem that we have ongoing. I've asked you that, and you've answered me. This is not an ongoing problem that we have. We've got laws, we've got rules, we've got ordinances that we can enforce now. We don't have the manpower. And unless it's something that's hurting the people of our community and our citizens, and there's a major outcry over it, I don't see us adopting any more rules, regulations, or ordinances in our city. People moved here because they like this stuff. They like the way we do things. I don't think they want to be ruled in policy to death.
So you're okay with accessory building or structure in the front yard?
You know what, I might not like it, but I don't think it's my right as a city commissioner to tell my neighbor what they can and can't do in their yard.
With the laws of property, that is, it's all our concern.
Well, that's your opinion, Red.
Yes.
Well, I mean, you know what's coming at the next PDRB meeting? It's an ordinance to impose some design standards that, that they're going to review and.
And I think that's a totally different ballgame than this right here.
It's a planned review order. Are they shortage with doing this, making ordinances like this? I didn't think that would be a function.
You have.
My opinion.
You're right. And, and like I said a few minutes ago, we maybe got the cart before the horse a little bit on this one. But on the next one, y'all told them to look at.
That's right. We did. We struck again. Now they're bringing.
I think I'd like to look at this a little further before we did anything on this.
If the purpose, if the purpose was swimming pools, why are we?
I don't need.
Aye.
I'm ready to vote on them now.
Because all we're going to do is we're going to have another.
You don't have to vote on.
What we need to do then, just, what do we just make?
I'm going to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, until we've got time to look at it. I, I personally just believe that if, if extend from the swimming pools, now we're adding all these ancillary structures. I just, I have not had a lot of time to look at the impact. I know that our folks grandfathered in that currently have these structures.
Yeah.
Second. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, first by Commissioner Ashwood, and second by Commissioner Vasquez. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Another. Motion passed. It's four to one.
The next thing I have is the notice to receive bids on the, on the Gulf County Hospital lots. And if y'all will approve that, we will get it advertised and.
We ain't sold those yet?
Tom, I'm ready to move forward with this. Before I do, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like for everybody to look at the prices that we set. And just to be sure that everybody's still comfortable with those same prices. I have an individual tell me that, you know, it may have been fine back when we said it, but we might want to relook at them again. I'm not entirely overpricing. Last time I did some research, this time I have not. So I would like for y'all, let's see if everybody's comfortable with these prices before we advertise this and move any forward with these prices. But yes, I am ready to move forward.
Are you thinking when you go on or?
Well, yeah, definitely. But, you know, I may be wrong too.
I'm comfortable where it is personally. The only other thing I, I brought up one time before, I'll bring it up again tonight, is if a broker brings us a buyer, I think we ought to have something down to begin with. Or either through a motion or something that, what are we going to, what percent are we going to?
I'd like to sell the sale.
If it's a seed bid process, if a broker can't bring us a buyer.
Yeah, he could. He could say on behalf of so and so.
I would think that the buyer.
I would think he would have to get his condition above what we ask for.
I'm just trying to, you know, be proactive as far as what if we, one does bring us one, what are we going to say? We'll have to wait till the next meeting to tell you how much we're going to pay.
I don't think we should pay him anything. I think he should get his money on top of what he paid for the rent.
I'm fine. I'm just, just bringing it up.
Why don't include where it says that buyers will pay all the cost? Let me include broker's commission in that section. And, and that way at least the brokers know what they're getting at.
That's fine. Okay. That works.
Is that written on the same basis as Tom saying broker protected?
No. I mean, if I say broker protected, that means we're going to pay him.
Okay. This is saying they're going.
If you're a real estate broker and you're looking to get some money out of this, you're going to be getting it from your buyer.
Exactly.
Exactly.
All right. While we're on that, I, I walked property today. And of course, the survey stakes are up there, and we got lot one, lot two, and so forth written on the side. I took the liberty to go down to, to the Star, get some prices on signs that just would say lot one through six, that we could put right in the middle of each lot. So people drive by, they'll, they'll know what lot one, lot whatever, so forth are. Also, a two by three sign that would say Patton Park subdivision, and it would give a city hall phone number on there. So there are a lot of people that ride around all during the week and looking, especially weekends. So I thought that two by three sign, which is the, it's synthetic metal, I forget what they call it. It was forty-seven dollars. And six of the lot, individual lot signs, with total one hundred and thirty-two dollars. That'd be about fifteen dollar setup fee. So we're talking a little less than two hundred dollars to have those signs made. And the public works guys could attach them to some tuba fours and, and put them in the ground. They, they thought those would be a little better withstand the weather than the, than the plastic coat type that you normally see with the political signs. And the lot signs, the price on those are based on the size of the, the political signs. And I'm not, I'm not sure. I think that's eighteen by twenty-four, but don't hold me to that. But anyway.
Is your reason on this to get people to bid higher?
No, it's just, it's just to let people know what, where the lot's off. Where they won't have to go, I think, on the website to look at the plaque and that type thing. So it's just a, just another tool to maybe make it easier to sell them.
Well, Commissioner Vasquez, I think we already voted on a budget for advertising. If we haven't used that, is there money still left for that?
We haven't done it yet. One of my questions before we got any further was, because we got fifteen hundred dollars that we voted at the last meeting for. We need to, recommendations to do it for thirty days, advertise this thing for seal bids. We need to decide. I know we talked about Zillow, we talked about the Star, we're talking about other options on there. We need to get a concrete word in.
And I was, I, I think I misunderstood you, Jim, because I was under the impression that we had some numbers unlike the famous city news.
We did have some numbers, yes.
So my thing to the big guys is leave it up to staff to say, okay, we got, Rex is wanting to do the two hundred dollars in signs. And I probably think that's good money spent on that. I agree. So then that would leave us thirteen hundred dollars. So let's say, okay, guys, let's get the best thing we can for our book with that thirteen hundred dollars. And just leave that to y'all to decide. Commission, are y'all fine with that?
I'd say keep it local first. If it doesn't, if we don't sell them in the first month, then we can put it up for bid again and go out a little further.
That's exactly right. Because if you do it for a thirty day seal bid, they're going to come to you. If you don't like what you see, guess what? We'll go back to Plan B.
That, that two hundred dollars may be the best advertising, I understand.
And that, and we're also too going to put it on Zillow regardless of what we do in the paper. My friend, is that something else staff can line up?
I'm not familiar with it, but I'll find somebody that uses it.
Do we have a motion for this two hundred dollars?
Do we need it?
I think it's.
I think you're okay with fifteen hundred.
We'll go above the fifteen hundred cap and put on.
You just need the mayor, you just need to approve the form, the advertising that you have here.
Let me ask you something. Did we already bypass the part where everybody looked at the lots and everybody's in agreement to the pricing?
I just, I don't know, okay. I don't take anybody else.
Bill?
Do we think sixty-five enough for four, five, and six? What's the rest of them?
That was my only question. I don't know that though, because I don't have the answer to that. What's your, oh, you guys' thoughts on voting today?
Well, the lots around the area, it's, it's about the same price, hasn't it?
Not even sold in that neighborhood.
There's not a lot, there's not a lot of comps in that neighborhood. I pulled them up and I looked. But the thing is, is you got supply and demand that's going to drive the price here. You got to start somewhere. And I'm really, you know, guys, I don't know the sixty-five, but I've been to many auctions before. I know this is a seal bid auction. But the thing is, usually the price is going to get what it's worth anyway. So I'm comfortable leaving like it is. If y'all want to, we can go up five, ten grand, whatever y'all want to do. That's the reason I mentioned that.
I'm comfortable. The quicker we sell them, we cut the grass as much.
I can agree with what we have on that.
Well, I'm fine with y'all.
Okay.
I'm motioning to go forward with the, probably get the presentation in our agenda packet with prices and with the only change being the broker change.
Motion by Commissioner Vasquez. Second by Commissioner Ashwood. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. It's five to zero.
On your amended agenda, I would advise this afternoon that Mr. Garner would be willing to settle any kind of issues he has with the city of Fort St. Joe for a total of seven thousand dollars and release us from any kind of liability that we may have to him. And so that's on the agenda for your consideration.
Would this be considered payout?
No, absolutely not. This is going to settle most of any issue that we may have here.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and say it. I might be giving him anything. Well, we, we haven't in the past paid anybody else that was terminated.
Let me ask you this, Jim. I was told Sharon Anderson's paid her. You know that to be true?
We found some documentation. It's done. It's before I was in force from the city of Fort St. Joe. According to the records that we found, there was somebody paid for it.
So there has been a precedent set.
My understanding is that.
Well.
There was nothing in the profile that authorized any payment. There's no record authorizing payment. The records were checked, and there's no signature from anyone stating to pay her that amount. And Mr. Anderson is correct. This was prior to his being part of the city.
Yeah, I realize that.
It is my fault. I, I heard on the street that a former commissioner had been lobbying everywhere around on behalf of Mr. Garner. And I've yet to hear anybody that's lobbying on behalf of the Pierce family, who suffered most in this terrible tragedy. And here we are about to give this man some remuneration. And by all, all investigations from FDLA to the state attorney, it said was the cause of it, because he didn't follow procedure. I mean, I, I'm totally against it. I'm, I'm really upset about it. The Pierce family's handled this thing with great dignity. And they, it's, I can't imagine me going through what they've been through and handling it the way they did. And I just, I just can't, can't see it. And when it's all over, I'm going to look them in the eye and say, I did the right thing.
Let me have to take permission, but we have a former commissioner that is gone. And Tom, you know what I'm saying. He has committed extortion. If you have information on somebody and you threaten to divulge that unless you are paid out, my understanding, that is extortion. And that's what this is. And I am absolutely not for it.
You know.
I know it's the easy way out. But we're not about taking the easy way out. This family has suffered. If you can sit here and look this lady in the eye and vote for this, you are wrong.
We, you know. I said the same thing in a meeting or two, you know, a few weeks back. And it didn't matter what I said. I have great respect for this family. They've always treated me with kindness, very kindness. I didn't think this guy deserves to lose his job. And I think we've got to put this to an end one way or the other. The family don't need to be going through a whole lot more. The city doesn't need to go through a whole lot more. I'm not for paying the man off. I'll make that statement. Sometimes you have to do things that you really don't want to do. And you just have to. Circumstances prevent it. And I just feel terrible. Always have, have a sense of that. Always will.
Well, Mayor?
When this thing's over, I'm ready to look at Miss Charlotte, saying that Charlotte made the best decision she could make. That's what I would say to you. We, we, you know, we, we're willing to go, we're willing to go all the way as far as we can go for a double wide trailer out of there. I mean, we, let's let the process play, then play its way out. We've got a process in place. We've got a grievance committee. Let's let the process play itself out, and then we'll go from there. But this, this, we're talking about human, we're talking about human life here.
Let Ms. Pierce, I want you to hear Ms. Pierce. I, 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 I've talked to her and sat in the lane, talked to her. And, and she's lost more than anybody. And, and my consideration is to her at the end of the day.
Gentlemen, the only thing I would say is Chief Herring made a recommendation to Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson made a recommendation. You in charge, you have charged both of these men with running their departments. Mr. Anderson with running the city. You have seen, I'm sure, the report from the state attorney, Glenn Hess, his findings. You have read, I'm sure, the other information. We've had other people who were terminated who received nothing. If you can't support the two men who have made those recommendations, then you're putting a crack in city hall that will never be repaired. Because from this day forward, every person that's terminated, they're going to start running to you individually. If someone has something to expose, come stand in front of this microphone and let everybody hear it. But this back door running to you saying, I've got dirt, I've got dirt. Well, if you've got dirt, let's put it out front. Let's, these two gentlemen spent untold hours. It's not been easy for anyone. But I honestly think if you're going to support them as far as leaders of departments that you have hired, maybe some of you were not here when they were hired. They had given you their recommendation, and by you not following their recommendation, you are taking the responsibility that they have away from them, and you are making decisions. These men have worked, as I said, long and hard. As far as someone who's not even involved with the city, running back and forth to you, running to Mr. Gibson. Had this been stopped weeks ago, we wouldn't be dealing with it tonight. Had policy and procedure been followed the night of February the eleventh, I think everyone that has given you a report has said we would not have the outcome that we have. I'm sorry for what has happened. I'm sorry you've had to deal with it. But to say that this man deserves one dime, in my humble opinion, is wrong. If you pay him, everybody that's been terminated that didn't get anything is going to come back and say, well, you made an exception. As far as I'm concerned, there is no exception. Policy, procedure was not followed, that was a call that was made by him. That's why you have policy and procedure, is to know what to do in any circumstance. Had it been followed, apparently the outcome could have possibly been completely different.
As far as putting it behind us, it'll never, we'll never put it behind us. Ever.
I think there's a process going on right now, the grievance procedure that hasn't been followed through yet. And it may be for the cart before the horse to make any decision until that plays out and see what happens there.
You know, guys, I'm going to tell you, my heart goes out. I was here. I pulled up same time, Jim, and did it. But I can never imagine the hurt you're feeling and the hurt that you have felt and the hurt you continue to feel. And when I came to this meeting tonight, I was probably under the thought process of, let's move on, let's get it behind us, because I don't know. And I will tell you this. But the newspaper stuff needs to stop. And if it's coming out of city hall, it needs to stop. Because it's not a good reflection on our city. And I don't know where it's coming from. I don't care. Hey, Charlotte, I do love you and your family. I'm not going to vote on this. There's a grievance board up. That was my initial thought. And it was never to hurt you if I'd have voted the other way. It was to let's move on so that you didn't have to see that in the paper every week. And that everybody in our city, because it's not good to be in our paper every week. It's all over town. But there's not, any of that does not even measure to the hurt you felt. So the way I feel about it being in the paper, or somebody else does, it doesn't matter. Mr. Mayor, I, I guess at this point, we need to let the grievance hear you, because I can't make this decision.
Well, we need to vote this down, table it, probably, and then we can.
Why don't we just?
We want to make a motion.
Do we? We don't have to do anything.
Don't do anything.
We just think that's.
All right. Yes.
Mayor, the first time we have an old business tonight is 102 Stone Drive. At the last meeting, Mr. Mike was asked if he'd come back and get with me at any kind of lots that he may have found. I think Mr. Mike's here tonight. I have not heard anything back from Mr. Mike. I have nothing to go down 102 Stone Drive with.
About the foundation, is Bo Trill getting anything from the manor?
A meeting with Bo Trill tomorrow and some other topics, but to my knowledge, I haven't heard anything back. Have you heard anything?
Last thing I've heard, and you still just not have settled foundation plans.
Haven't received anything. The next item we have is a reference to the Ward Ridge Building. Where the building's come available for your consideration, if you want to use it for commission meetings. Couple of you taking a look at it, but just give us an direction if you think it's something you want to use. We'll get it set up for you.
I still haven't had nothing to look at it yet. The only problem I have with it is being so far away from downtown. We don't have a whole lot of people in it anyway, but maybe it doesn't really matter. But obviously, my only thought is it's just a little far out.
And I agree with that, Mr. Mayor, but this is terrible. They just said they can't hear it on TV. It's uncomfortable. It's not in a good setting.
I think it's very little to do out there, both getting it ready.
It looks like a commission.
Can we go ahead and maybe tonight, and let's say?
You want to try it?
Let's try it, you know, we're a long way back up. It's got to be better than this guy.
Yeah.
We'll set you up on a temporary basis, and then when we get in there, you can look around and decide other improvements you want to make to it, decide on the front.
Well, Ms. Charlotte made a comment to me too, that something that we need to look at. And then I got to thinking about what she said today, even the one we've been using doesn't have it. And then I got to thinking about what she said today, even the one we've been using doesn't have it. But one thing we need to think about, y'all, is an exit. And it's, you know, kinda close to where we sit. Leonard Skinner said, "Give me three steps." So I'd say, "Three steps from our table, we need a back door."
There is a back door on-
There is? How far is it that way?
Pretty close.
We need to just look at the exits.
So you'll set it up and let us know when it's ready, or we plan to go to the next meeting there?
Absolutely.
If y'all do, we'll get y'all, we'll do a temporary basis.
We can have this set up.
We will get you chairs that you have upstairs. We can definitely get those, so you'll be more comfortable. And we do it on a temporary basis, and you tell us whether you want us to be for it or not.
I make this, we do that for our next meeting.
Question by Commissioner Bezett. We have a second. My Commissioner has for any further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Much success.
The next item we have is a reference to the employee wellness program that Commissioner Bezett's working on.
Right. I talked the last two meetings, matter of fact. Talked to Sarah Heinz today. I'm trying to get everybody lined up for a workshop. I looked at next Tuesday. You guys, with five or six o'clock would be best. And can you meet next Tuesday? No more than an hour. She's got a 10-minute PowerPoint. And as soon as Dwight Benner gets back with me, I'll have him there to talk to us about how it will affect our insurance rates. And we'll go from there. I'd like to have the department heads there, too, because it's gonna be important that they take the message back to their employees that we wanna, we wanna get everybody physically fit and make sure they have a physical every year. And let's, you know, drive these rates down that keep going up every year. So what was next Tuesday? Either 27, five or six, whatever. She was good either time. Which was best. Five o'clock? Five o'clock. So I'll get with Dwight. Hopefully, he's, he'll be here. But if not, she's got a very good presentation she can make. And we'll go from there.
Next item we have is a reference to pickleball court. Commissioner Bezett's working on that.
Okay, guys. I met with some folks who play a lot of pickleball and one of the fastest-growing sports in the country. They're here tonight. If they will come to the podium, I think Mr. Rod Rieger has got a handout for us. He's coming forward. We got Robert Thomas in the back with that so-and-so t-shirt on, that we all have some love and some don't. He and Rod have won some tournaments. We got Charlie Black, who's a pickleball extraordinaire and part-time hit songwriter. And Rod's wife, Pat. And they'll make a short presentation, and then I'll talk to you about what we, what we found today. So Rod, take it away.
All right. The handout that I gave you is three pages. The first page is just some basic facts on pickleball. It's really a very fast-growing sport. Lots and lots of people playing. It appeals to older people because it's played with very light paddle and very light ball. On a court, a court of the size of a tennis court, so there's much less running. It's growing exponentially. And there are no dedicated pickleball courts in the Panhandle. There are pickleball courts, but they're shared with tennis courts or basketball courts or whatever. And they're just taped off on temporary nets, kind of thing. The closest dedicated courts are in the villages of Florida, which is a retirement community. And they have 8,000 players just in that retirement community, 148 pickleball courts. That tells you how popular it is with the older generation. Now, there are also two pickleball tournaments, Robert and I have won those, in the Panhandle. Both of them in Destin. They attract, these are taped-off pickleball courts on a basketball floor. And they attract 100 people and 30 bucks a head, twice a year. So if we had a larger facility than we could attract twice as many people, probably could charge more and make enough money to probably pay for the maintenance of these courts. Because once you put in a court like this, and as you know, any asphalt surface is going to degrade over time. It's gonna get cracks and so on. And so you, it's not just a matter of initial investment. You need to have some relatively minor, but still significant maintenance cost. So the idea that I have is to run a tournament like the Destin tournament and charge similar or higher fees to get enough money to pay for the maintenance over time.
Yeah. Well, that being said, we met at the Washington Gym Area today. The tennis courts out there have been deteriorating. Nobody uses them. There are quite a few cracks. I told them, you know, it's gonna be a low-budget operation unless we can get a Firdat grant, which will be on next year's grant cycle. And I talked to John. John is, we had talked about this, as you know, guys, what, six, eight months ago, and agreed to try to help put one somewhere, low-budget. And John had run the numbers, and they're, they're cracked identical to what we've got here that Rod provided. But John felt like they're public works, could patch, crack, smooth it out. We could possibly get inmate labor to resurface it or repaint it, because we gotta get rid of tennis court lines. These guys said if we could do that and get the permanent posts and nets, I mean, they could round up the money they thought to have a line. So we're a little premature with some of it. We, they have how many play every day, several times a week? 35 people or something? And to get some of those folks in town, they may spend a buck or two, eat lunch with us. A tournament, we'd fill up. We'd fill up hotels. So there are potentials. We just, the initial cost is gonna be a little bit. The main expense, I think, would be the net and the permanent post is tuned at about $3,500 to $4,000. Now, Robert has agreed to talk to Sandy Quinn with the county and see if he would use some of his discretionary funds to help us out. And if so, we might move a little faster than trying to come up with, say, $10,000. Mike, the cooler did some research today. Gulf Air resurfacing in lines, I think it was $9,000, Mike?
Well, I'm not sure what Gulf Air paid, but I talked to that same contractor, and he gave me a budgeted quote, "To resurface those courts, which are the same size as Gulf Air's, and line six pickleball courts was $9,000."
Oh, okay.
And that was an estimate, budgeted number, of something we'd have to go out and forbid. But that was a professional contractor.
Patch cracks and all that would be-
That was patching the cracks, resurfacing and lining six pickleball courts. It's accompanied by the mobile. That was nine grand was his budgeted estimate from a professional contractor on that. That didn't include the posts and the net, was it?
Right. So we're looking at $13,000. But if we can save the expense and temporarily get folks playing. Now, I know everybody doesn't live in Port Saint Joe that plays pickleball. But two things I asked these guys. Number one, is there a potential to pay a little user fee every month? And another thing I did mention to you guys would, maybe every other month or something, you could sponsor a Saturday morning clinic to promote pickleball to the youth. You know, we need, if we're gonna, if we wanna get, I mean, soccer around here was nothing five or six, eight years ago, and you go out there Saturday morning now, there's kids everywhere playing soccer. But we don't want this to be a fad thing. We need to expose people to it so we can keep it going, so.
Yeah, it's very common for pickleball facilities to hold these clinics, both for senior citizens and for middle-school kids. Middle schools are looking for athletic kinds of curriculum. This is one example. They probably jump all over that. And we do have people that will be willing, particularly Robert and I, to conduct clinics.
So what do you guys think?
Let me say one other thing. If you look at the last page, to start one of these pickleball court facilities this size will cost you about $100,000. There's about $80,000 to $90,000 worth of infrastructure already at the Washington rec center and those two test courts that aren't being used. So you've got a really good, huge start on a first-class facility there. And we just need to bring up this supplement.
So what is the total that we're gonna need to spend to get this thing going, Rex? What did you figure, about 13?
Well, we'd have to, you know, get with John again on what, how much work they can do. We need to-
Well, can you?
Well, I just want to say this, just for everyone, so they all understand.
We can't just start this tomorrow.
Now, we're not asking you about the tennis court. We're talking pickleball.
Okay, well, we'll remove tennis court and then insert pickleball.
Can you resurface, John?
Can we resurface? We can paint. We can seal the cracks.
What is it, epoxy or what do they?
It's typically epoxy. Yeah. It's a crack ceiling that they sell.
Didn't you say that wouldn't be included in the lining, the striping?
That was a professional contractor that does it for a living that would do that. We're talking about if we just went out and bought some material to fill the cracks and painted it ourselves.
Right. As long as everyone understood at some point, you know, it won't be an eight-year, you know, last, basically. So the next two, three, four years, the city's gonna have to consider having that professional come in. But I think, you know, we could get it done.
We could budget money for it.
Or down the road.
We just go ahead and just take it out of the budget now.
John's suggesting that we do a quick patch on it and get something, and then budget in the next year or two to have a professional resurface.
We were all for this, but like you said, four, five months ago, I'm still for it. Because I mean, Mexico Beach got people out there all the time. Long as Robert James been playing tennis, I think he's been converted.
He is. He's had it.
I don't understand him out there. So I'm all for helping. The only thing is, is I've got so much work to do at those ballparks and that stackhouse. I'd rather us find the money or we had to take it from some other fund to do that instead of waiting on a Firdat grant a year down the line.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what Sandy can kick in a little bit. We know $4,000 for net. We know, I don't have any idea how many gallons of paint. And John could figure that out. John could calculate that out for us. And then we're talking about lining. We need to, you know, can you guys do it? Can our guys do it? Probably quicker. If we, if we set the post and got everything ready, and then we'd be done. And then y'all could do the lining, and our city employees wouldn't have to be, you know, they could be doing their regular jobs.
So what do we need to do? Just go ahead and y'all, let's come up two weeks?
Yeah, let's, just get kind of a nod, handshake agreement that we want to move forward with it.
So Sandy can do.
Robert, feel to stay in contact with me.
Sandy did have $4,000 left.
If you-
I was going to that bleacher.
Yeah, right. Heard another part of that.
Do you have my cell phone number? I can give it to you right now, you, because you guys don't, you guys don't have to sit around and listen to our own. Let's just really enjoy it. But anyway, there, myself, you'll stay in touch, and then I'll get back. Next, our next meeting is the first Tuesday in November. And so maybe we'll have a-
Robert, is that enough room over there for six?
That's a nice, that's a nice.
Robert, I told you, you got back. Now we gotta get this thing where it's not bad. We gotta get this thing out.
And see, they've got parking over there. There's restrooms. There's shade. There's, there's a real-
Well, it's not used as a tennis court, so I'd be excited. Am I correct, Mr. Robert? There's nobody ever used it.
Have you been out to Mexico Beach, folks?
Yeah.
Just hope that if y'all get in to see if you want to get into the pickleball business, see if it takes off. If it really takes off, then, you know, you look at a Firdat grant opportunity, you may want to make a really, really nice court system out there.
Well, you know, I talked to Bobby Tickle about it, told him that name did have to end, trying to get a donation, and he didn't buy it.
We'll get some of these folks in town, then spend their money in St. Joe, and that'll be a good thing for everybody. So we're working on it, guys. We'll do it. Thanks, y'all, for coming. Appreciate it. Man, nobody, y'all had to come.
That's right. That was the only-
Everybody ill had to be in.
The last item we have in our old business, electronic sign at Freightgate Park. It was actually tabled at the last meeting.
Does this mean I was signing one?
The digital sign.
Well, if they don't, I ain't complaining for it. We done went through that.
You're actually autonomous as a city government, if you want to consider signs, but there are some regulations on the rules.
We're heartbroken at once.
Commissioner Thursday was gonna have some-
Yeah, and I have not spoken to Jennifer. She was out of town. I don't, is she back in town? Do you know?
I haven't heard of her.
I don't, I think she's still out of town. But I will tell you all this, and I want everybody to read this and tell me what y'all think about it. But right now, that's our sign over there that we got. I do not think our city should be dictated about what goes on that sign and what doesn't go on that sign by the Tourist Development Council. I'm all for the Tourist Development Council. I sit on that board, and I make my living from a lot of tourists. That's not what I'm saying at all. But I'm also saying that we are community-minded in our city. And for us to sit there and say that certain things can't be put on there and that they'll take what goes on the sign, I'm not ready to move forward with that. And I don't know how y'all feel. That's just my own opinion.
No, I like, I like the idea of the sign as a catch-22. But I would like the TDC to own it. I don't want to put that for burden on our employees. And somebody wants to put a sign, put a message up there, we got to stop what we're doing and stuff. So I would like to, for them to own it and them be responsible for it. But there's gotta be an agreement that, I mean, there's some really big city events that benefit everybody. The Humane Society from Bow Wow Bash, why couldn't that be on there? The Alliance for Sportsman's Bank, it benefits site conservation. Why couldn't that be on there? There are a lot of the cancer, what, uh-
Relay for Life.
Yeah. Relay for Life, so.
But then as you get there, Rex, what about Little League Baseball having a fundraiser?
I agree.
What about two leagues?
But now, we get, yes, but we don't want to get to the point where there's a fish fry to help so-and-so make travel, I mean, individuals, we've got to be careful.
Be careful. And I agree with that part.
Just organization's fine.
Yeah, that, this property, year-round, paid for and has been bought by the local folks of our community.
That sounded to be nice. I'd like to, I would like to make sure there's a, an automatic cutoff at a certain time that we could determine when that would be. And I'd like to float the same idea to the church, that I don't think it should be on all night long. And, but, you know, that's just me, but a sign will look nice. It'll look very nice.
Well, Jim, am I wrong? The TDC already does all the letter placement on that sign, right?
Yes, they do.
Now, we see crystal over there. So it's their man hours doing it now.
I take it, though, the electronic sign, you could post several different things at one time. I mean, but several different events could be on the sign, not just, you know.
That's what I'm saying. We need to y'all get some.
You know, if you're a sign owner and you have an organization, we got a lot of good organizations at Port Saint Joe. We do the same thing for our rentals and everything else. I don't know the TDC rules and regulations on what they can and can't do, but I think it would be a-
If it's organization, but I-
I think what we do is present to them, if it's a 501(c)(3), we ought to allow it.
And that's what we gonna have to do, y'all. We gotta throw up something that we're all built on, we're with, and then us present it to them. Because, I mean, I haven't talked to Jennifer. I don't know exactly, you know?
I spoke to Jennifer, and she said that there are rules, if the TDC purchased the board, there are certain things she can't put on there, but-
I'd like to see it.
She didn't get into specific terms. There's rules.
I would like to see it, because I just can't believe it.
Because that's promoting our community and community events. So I think that's good for tourists and locals.
Absolutely. So, and I mean, they want to put their Partner of the Month on there. I mean, that's just advertising for David Dela or something.
We need to point her to look out. She needs to be like, what?
According in or the-
What we can't do, and then we can investigate that, because it's easy to say you can't do this.
Right. Because to be quite honest with you, you know what is not out of the realm that we just keep on going like we're going right now and put $20,000 in the budget and the city own a sign over there like that? I know that's easier said than done, but I'm gonna tell you, those signs look good, and they reach out there.
I think we want the TDC-
I think we need to look at their rules and if their rules don't apply to what we think. I think we need to look at their rules and if their rules don't apply to what we think, then maybe we can work together with them.
I think we can work with them, yeah.
You say that, but you wait till she puts that low dock up there and starts hauling the people to Applejack's Cola, Rex, and you're gonna have your cap.
She could always give the twenty thousand dollars.
I'll go up the road and let the boat blow up. All right.
Well, we got, all right.
On the new business, first request, we have a fee waiver request from a Mr. Allen Weems.
Moved in iron.
Second.
Is he charging it? Okay, well, I'm much my commission, was that a second by Commissioner Ashbrook? Any further discussion? Uh, what is this, what is it? It's a reminder, and he's gonna be- He's gonna be taking up a collection or not? That's, that's pretty simple, but he's gonna be making money off of it. That's what it amounts to. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Close right side. So we, we, we both want not to have it, okay?
Not to give him the fee waiver, he can have it.
Well, he can have it, it's not a fee.
But we're charged.
That's what I said, Commissioners, you may want to take, so what I do is I'll print out a copy for you, I've talked to several of you today. Last year, it was brought before you and it got changed, so I think it's July the fourteenth of last year, new resolution. It's tiered right now. If you're a commercial business, it's seven hundred something dollars, that means you're for-profit selling something along those lines in there. If you're a non, if you're a non-commercial, meaning somebody having a birthday party or a wedding, it's four hundred something dollars. If you're a 501(c), you reduce it down to a hundred bucks. So it's tiered right now, that it's only a hundred bucks for a non-for-profit on there, so you made it a pretty normal fee.
I, I see, we got, down the line, we've got that on the agenda, I'm a Commissioner Ashbrook, but, so I'll, I'll settle my comments till we get there.
Uh, the next item we have is Marina Pennington contract, it's up for renewal again this year. Uh, to kind of give you a history for the past year, we've had very little outside of grants that have been done in the past year for Ms. Pennington. Uh, the board last year wants to try to reduce those costs. This past year, out of city coffers, was seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. There was, uh, roughly forty thousand dollars that came out of the DEO grant, and Ms. Pennington got thirty-six thousand of, but it was grant funded. So, last year, seven ninety-seven, twenty-five out of city budget.
I mean, I don't like somebody that, that we know, that's worked with us in the past, that knows our city, and I mean, maximum of twenty thousand, I don't see us spending even half that. Yeah, I, I ain't part of, I went money to, city has she been spending with her other men, you had grant money, and it's very normal, so. She's doing the job for us, getting things done, you know? Don't send up and paying all the way to her, other than what she makes off the grants.
Well, my thing was last year, y'all, she writes a forty thousand dollar grant, she gets thirty-six thousand of that grant. What's the other forty thousand dollars they took?
Tom Jensen.
Well, I haven't heard of him.
God, he's got good stuff on this, he probably right, I'd just like to argue with Tom.
I'll make a motion, we approve her contract for the coming year. Right, a motion by Commissioner Perez, we have a second.
I'll second for discussions.
Second by Commissioner Ashbrook for discussion.
I would, I do, I would like to know, this grant money, is that how she pretty much pays herself? She does us a favor by going out for grants to pay for her services?
It, uh, it, it kinda depends on, on what's going on. Um, when we initially hired Marina ten years ago?
Yeah.
Ten, eleven years ago?
Yeah.
Um, we were in a, we were in a mess in terms of our comprehensive planning. We discovered that, uh, a number of plan amendments that we had done over a period of time had actually never been transmitted in DEO. And at that point, um, she basically rewrote our comp plan, uh, did a lot of work on the land development regulations, and was paid out of city budget. Um, and, and over the last two, two or three years, nearly everything she's done has been grant-funded. Um, she has, uh, she has been instrumental in getting, uh, some planning grants for us, for the Port Authority. Um, and, uh, it, in the coming year, I expect that we will have very little, uh, in the, in the way of, of needs for, for a planner. But there's some, you know, there's some potential things going on at DEO that, that she may be able to get us some money for.
So she can generate, she's a revenue generator.
Yes.
Good, second, thanks.
All right, whether first or second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question passes five zero.
The next item we have is in reference to Neo Post Lease Folder Inserter, just in reference to our utility billing. We have an inserter, we take care of all of our billing ourselves in-house, in our mail machine. Currently have a four-year lease agreement that's coming due in February. Current cost is three hundred and seventy dollars a month for that. Uh, we've talked with our sales rep, we can get into another four-year lease, I don't think I would go any further than that. Equipment we got right now, you have a service agreement on it, it's being serviced, but it's jamming up, we're having some problems with it, so it's giving call up field, to be honest with you. So now's the time for you to consider going and getting us another piece of equipment under the lease, almost the same thought.
But Jim, there's no amount of cost expense, just, just the two-year.
And what they said is they would honor the three seventy up until February when your, when your contract expires, and then you'll start three seventy.
Yeah, the seven dollar mark.
Yeah.
Second.
I'll motion our Commissioner, y'all getting there. Commissioner Thursday, a second by Commissioner McCrone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question passes five zero.
All right, the next item we have is in reference city rental property, Commissioner Ashbrook, we wanna talk to you tonight about it.
Sure. Um, still new to this, but since I've been here, we have done multiple fee waivers. I went back to the July, July of two thousand and fourteen resolution, uh, that basically said that we probably shouldn't be doing that. Um, I am not against waiving some of the fees, but I am against using taxpayer dollars to hold an event. Uh, and these buildings do have a hard cost to them, and we rent out that Centennial building, there's a prep day, there's the event day, and then there's tear down. That's three days the air conditioner's running there, that we, we are actually losing money on. Uh, I just kinda wanted to get a head nod from the board that if it's an outdoor venue, I'm totally fine with waiving all the fees. Uh, but we need to come up with a minimum amount, and I think Jim said it, we do have that for a civic nonprofit group, it's a hundred dollars a day for that building. Uh, and I did find the Stackhouse information as well. But, uh, going forward, as we develop the park, the park system in town, and we may come upon some more rental properties in pretty up George Court Park. Uh, I think we kinda need to stick to our guns and let's make it a revenue source, you know, when we, I believe we restored the lighthouse, there could be some money in a pop for that, if it's one of our properties. And that's all that I have, I just kinda wanted to get everyone's opinion on, you know, sticking to our guns when it comes to renting a building.
Yeah, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to, uh, have city rental property on the agenda. It, it wouldn't hurt if we get a master list somehow, give us a master list, we can look at and see all our potential rental properties in the city. The Stackhouse, the Washington Gym, the Court Park, everywhere that we have, so, you know, we could, we could look at them, but, but guys, we don't need to waive a hundred dollar fee for anybody. They, they, I mean, it's, I mean, junior service league, gosh, it works great for our city and give back, and give back, and give back, but they give four hundred dollars to-
Sportsman's Bank?
The Humane Society, we give the Humane Society five thousand dollars a year and then they perform a hundred dollar waiver. So, I'm just saying, we, we've got, we've got an ordinance that says everybody pays a hundred bucks. I mean, a 501, uh, non-profit.
But my original intention, I'll, I'll be honest, was come in here and say, you know, let's find, you know, let's find a company that'll come in here and take over our rental properties. Let's let them be the judge, we want this amount of money. Waive it to a point if you'd like, let's just make sure every time it gets rented, every time we hand out a key, that we're getting a check. But, um, I just, the other building too, we've got the new, well, Lord Ridge City Hall, that has great office space, you know, for long-term possibility rentals in there.
There's another one.
And another boardroom in addition to the meeting room that we're talking about. So there's a lot of potential, and I think coming up with that master list or the price list, maybe workshop it and see what we think. Talk to the event planners in town, what would their brides be willing to pay for these different spaces?
We're gonna, we're gonna have the, uh, Maddox, uh, House when we get the, uh-
The museum as well?
All that going, the Keable's quarters and then the museum, so, so there's a lot of revenue sources, uh, people are willing, willing to pay for it.
Sure they would.
So I just think we need to, uh, stick right now on that. It's a good start.
Only thing I would say on that, though, guys, is, is if you're gonna give a 501(c), and that can be broad range for a hundred bucks, correct, Jim?
Yes.
And why charge somebody to have a birthday party four hundred dollars? That's the only, my only drawback, I agree with everything that you just said, but I just think that I don't see the difference there. So I wasn't looking at it, I'm not saying it should be a hundred dollars, too, I just think four hundred might be a little-
There's a huge difference there.
Huge difference, so, I'm all for it, looking at it, but let's look at that, that particular part there.
I just don't wanna, my whole point is I just don't wanna see it drop below the hundred dollars, and I still think if you rent that Centennial building for a day, you're losing money on it.
Right. And I, I, you know, I used to be against it, but if we just set a standard and say, you know what, we're not gonna pay less than a hundred, then I, I think that's something we could all live with.
So as direct staff, don't put any more fee waiver requests on the agenda.
And can, and can you attach that fee schedule that we established, uh, several years ago to that master rental list of maybe next, uh, meeting? And that way we familiarize ourselves once again with, with those fees.
All right, the last item I have tonight is Mustang Police Report, uh, Mayor Patterson, we wanna talk to you tonight about it.
Yeah. We got the older people in town wondering what's going on. I have two or three of them that ask me every other day, you got, you got it? Just tell them to do it, he'll do it, I said, that's not the way that I handle it. But, uh, I don't know, I, I need, uh, direction, uh, for me to go back and tell these people, we just not gonna put it in there, and they're gonna ask me first thing is why.
Why, why do they want it there?
I guess 'cause they're old and making something to be the ring, man.
They gossip about things.
I-
And I'm gonna tell you something, gossip kills people. And just because, and you've been arrested, you ain't been proven guilty of nothing.
That's right.
I agree.
But they say the sheriff's report's in there, they just don't understand. I said, I will bring it up, and we'll discuss it, and next time I see you-
You told me y'all read.
I'm firmly against it. Call me, I don't know, I don't know what's going on, but I'm against putting it in the paper.
Right.
People are, you know-
Yeah, I just, for somebody's misfortune, whether self-inflicted or not, you know, it just-
Any affected families.
Yeah.
He makes the worst United, but that's the thing, boy.
All right.
Look, Ian, uh-
Gene Brad.
Ian Brad.
Oh, yeah. He said he runs a nursing home, he runs a nursing home. All the people in nursing home.
Oh, my God.
Hey, I wanna ask a question, too. I noticed Ms. Ann's not here tonight.
I don't know, anyone heard of Ms. Ann lately?
Why are we here if Ms. Ann's not here?
Did she request, uh?
She said from now on, so we, but from the next meeting, we're gonna be at the, we're at the building.
All right.
That's a reasonable accommodation.
That really is.
It is ADA compliant.
And she's closer to Lord Ridge than she is there.
Yeah, she'll be there.
Where she live?
Well, I wish she would have, but she are. We all on TV, she can't get with us.
She called me, did you get home?
I'm gonna run out of house.
All right, Jim, call McCrone.
They didn't call Rex.
He on in Oga, I told him right this way.
You know, my wife, I got all them, them cheerleaders out there.
All right, totally works.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything this evening unless the board has any questions for me.
How's the, uh, handicap sign going? Handicap sign stall?
I know they were working on it the day I was in. They finished it?
Okay.
And John, thank Dave and his inmate work crew for cleaning up the lot on, on Ninety-Eighth across from the express lane.
I will.
We got that through a grant, it's just looked so bad and, and, uh, and I asked him to see if we could get that cleaned up, and it looks wonderful. And the guys picked it up in a hurry, and it just looks nice, and it really does, so. And I think you'll, eventually it'll get grass to grow in there and we'll, we'll have a nice spot.
So, so everybody knows, I talked to John about all the fish on the beach, the island beach, and I saw our, I saw our-
Right.
In the city limits, down the county, so they walking, coming full with it, so John was gonna do something with it, so.
John is fish man. Well, John, when you do get some free time, there's still a bridge that ain't been tore down in four months. My very first meeting, my first motion, it still stands.
Yeah.
The bridge, it's the walking bridge.
Oh, the walking reason.
My first motion ever.
That doesn't mean-
You wanted that intact, correct, or does it matter?
It just is, y'all, the bear kids are down now, there's still kids on it.
I thought-
Originally, we talked about trying to-
I'll probably pull it out, see if we can do something with it.
We can try, Jim Norton's still on board to get in the welding class on it.
We'll try.
That's all you did, that's all you did, John.
I'll try to draw.
You got a new excavator with a bucket, just lift it out of there.
I don't have a new excavator yet.
Anyway, I'd have some complaints, kids going down on the beach, a lot of catfish, you know, dead rocks, so the county has done St. Joe Beach, but they're, they're not gonna do that. Yeah, they, they, they-
We don't pay county taxes.
No, they, they don't pay.
Right. We don't pay county taxes, and shoot.
All right, Mayor. Commissioner's on, uh, page thirty-two, we was in there. We got, uh, we got the, uh, specs, what we need to repair the St. Joe Beach tank. We would like the Bishop's Mission to receive bids when we can.
So I move.
All right.
What exactly is wrong?
Hold on, we got, we got a motion by Commissioner McCrone, a second by Commissioner Ashbrook, now, discussion.
I brought pictures.
Yeah, it, and actually, uh, we, it, if we were to replace that tank, or-
Oh, that is probably-
Some, yeah, I think, I think we can get it done for ten to twelve thousand dollars in that range.
In that range?
Yeah, yeah.
You're looking at fabricating?
Yeah, I've had a couple local fabricators come out and look at it, so, yeah.
Ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Nothing that can be done in-house?
I don't think so, I don't think it's gonna-
Oh, this is a special tank here.
Yeah.
You could get it fiberglass and metal and-
Yeah.
Where's the money coming from?
It's quite come out of repair maintenance of water plant, we just wanna see what the numbers come out and bring it back to you.
That was my question is, is what the, I know everybody's running everything on a shoestring budget this year, and I just, every time you say something about the budget, you see a hundred.
We just wanna see what we got, if we can afford it, 'cause the new lid, he priced us the lid with what, seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
We don't even need a lid.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five one, five zero.
Five one?
Five one.
Larry, you wanna bring up the date on, on the, uh, the line system and, uh, projected dates and so forth, or are you gonna?
Well, I talked with Phil, and of course, Clay's here tonight, he might want to talk about more, but, uh, last heard it, February looks like a good day.
He did, we said what, fourteen weeks for the equipment, Clay, is that what he said? He said fourteen weeks on the equipment.
Larry, while we, uh, one of our other meetings, a man showed up with a filter, you, did you see it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, how long, how long did he say it'd been in, but it was pretty bad, I mean, it, uh-
On Sixteenth Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, Craig said on Sixteenth.
I actually went and saw, I actually talked to Craig about, and I looked at the filter, I mean, the conversation Craig and I had was, was, was just bad. I mean, Lynn and I have had these conversations, I can't tell you how many times in the past. And I gotta lean on her for her expertise, but man, filter is just what it is, it's a filter.
Right, I just wondered how long it had been in.
He told me about a month, it was very, you know, very tight micron.
And he's got new, new lines.
He does, there's new lines in front, there's, there's no doubt that, you know, it's, it's doing its job. So hopefully with, you know, with the implementation, what Larry's fixing to put in, we can cut some of that out.
I thought I was wondering a little about the-
We're just pouring the maintenance out of the water, you know, what we're doing, we're doing the best we can, tell y'all, too.
No, I, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just wondering, if we, there's no process, Larry, if we-
I, I think if we, what it's gonna do, is gonna increase the alkaline of your water, the hardness of your water.
Right. Right.
And it's gonna not be so aggressive. You still got old lines connected to new lines, you know? And they're not all new out there.
Right.
And, you know, you still gonna have problems. But we're hoping to slow it down a little bit, slow the process. There was one conversation Craig and I had, you know, the transmission main, and the end, there was still work to be done. So he understood, and even told me on the phone, I mean, it's a hundred percent better than it was.
Right, oh, yeah.
No doubt about it. But he still has a concern because of what he's seeing, you know, when he pulls that filter out.
Right.
What about his pipes going from the street to his house? I live, I live like, I wanna save the BBC a pipe.
Yeah, I hope so.
Both of us got city bidding grant this year, and we can replace some more pipes. I mean, because then we got all these pipes replaced, we still got, we got good pipes, and then we got bad pipes, and good pipes in between, we got to get
No doubt, Larry, it's come a long way. We have come a long way.
Well, every time you have a vent, you know, you lose pressure or something, you know, it stirs it up. I mean, there's nothing we can do about that.
And Larry, the money you're gonna save on the chemical costs, it'll
That'll help a lot.
Free your budget up to repairing that
No doubt.
Listen in?
Couple of items tonight. I just wanna ask and see if we can get permission to start the process to go out and bids for our outboard motor, so we can get that motor, start tearing that bullpen out, so our sound disruptor signal will go out further. They're doing their job right now, but they're doing an even better job. We can get that bullpen out, and we can't start tearing that out until we get our motor. It's a budget to die.
Yeah, we're budgeting. I'm making a motion that we let Ms. Lynn to go out for bids. Uh, we got a motion by Commissioner Thursday, and second by Commissioner Mizier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, it's my vote.
Thank you. Um, the other item I have is, I want you to consider maybe instituting an after-hours fee for these liquid waste haulers. Um, we, we've got two or three companies, not all of them, that'll come like right. And I have a guy that works until five o'clock. I have him stacked, which I have somebody there from six in the morning till five in the afternoon. But there's a couple that wanna come like ten o'clock on Saturday morning after he knows the guys leave at nine, or they come in at six o'clock in the evening. And last year, we burned through our overtime on two-hour callouts for liquid waste haulers. So they can make the effort to get there by five o'clock if they will.
And Lynn, is it the same ones every time, or is it
Pretty much, it's the same ones that, that, you know, will come. They wanna dump their truck at the end of the day, so they, sometimes their calls they have on the way where you wait ten minutes, which is fine, cause they just get ten minutes of overtime rather than two hours. But I've got a couple that are kinda chronic, but are late. And I'm not sure the guys had said, hey, come, you know, power in there, like, two-hour callouts. I'm trying to alleviate
They got to grab that credit from City.
I'm trying to alleviate burning through my overtime. If they do come, a fifty-dollar charge for after-hours will cover that two-hour callout for that operator.
Yeah. Is that your recommendation?
I think fifty dollars will cover that two-hour callout.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know, it's only be after five o'clock, Monday through Friday, and then like after nine o'clock on Saturdays and Sundays.
And I think there's a time to, you, you can use your discretion if you've got somebody close by.
Once they realize they're gonna have to pay extra, they'll make a little extra to get there by five o'clock.
Right. Fifty dollars in my opinion?
I think so for now, unless, you know, it starts becoming a bit worse.
We got a motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Can you pull a discussion?
Hold on.
Mayor, one thing, anytime you do any fees, it needs at least being a formidable resolution. Can you just direct staff, does that motion, and then we'll bring it to you the next meeting?
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. And I still have to notify all the, you know, liquid waste haulers that we can be instituted.
Yeah, cause that's a great revenue stream for us.
Oh, yeah.
And I did that marketing for you that time, and you really think that
But it takes away from some of our revenue when you have to pay out a lot of overtime.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Clay!
We didn't bother with any other But did?
Resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, same, same motion. Commissioner McCrone, second to you. Commissioner Ashbrook, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Yeah, we got a city in here.
Yes, sir. Couple things tonight, golf cart crossing update. So we have, the process is, we sent an official request to DFTs saying cities interested in our golf cart crossing, across Ninety-Eight. They reviewed that, come back and say, okay, proceed, we're trying to study, or there's no way that's gonna happen. So that's where we're at, we've made that request. Uh, the guy that's reviewing that request, be back in the office, he's been out, should be back tomorrow or Thursday. So I hope by the next meeting, we'll at least have an indication for them whether we need to do the study or not do the study.
Is somebody that we have worked with before on this?
He did, on the last one, he did. So, yeah, I mean, he knows the city, he's been out there, he's looked at all the intersections.
Will they recommend the street to us?
Uh, we will, there's only four choices, second, third, first, second, third, and fourth. So, and he knows that, that was, I told him that in the request. And so he could, he could very well recommend one, say, do your study here. Or he could say, don't even bother with it, I don't know, we'll see. But that's, but that's the process. We follow that process, and then we'll go forward with the study, hopefully comes back and says, yes, we'll at least study. Okay. That's where that's at. Uh, the other update, we've talked about sewer along Avenue in the past, and with road bond, possibly Long Avenue with road bond now. So one of the first steps in that process is to get those gravity lines videoed, to see if they are, see if it's a good candidate for rehabilitation, rehab in place instead of totally tearing it out. So, I reached out to a vendor, he sent the pricing, I think, last night, got that over to Jim. I think it's in your boxes. Take a look at that, two weeks from now, we'll come back and discuss if you wanna move forward with that or not, or just what you wanna do. It should be in your boxes, that information. That was all I had for you.
Jim, where are we gonna get the money for the video inspection?
We're gonna have It's not terribly high, what's the number we got, Clay?
If, if they do the cleaning and the video, I think it was twenty-two, twenty-three thousand, things like that, if they do every
Well, this is what, we don't know what's going on with Long Avenue. You know, we've been asked by the county, we need to know, we need to know what's going on. Because the county's asked to give us some numbers as to how much we need for the road bond to repair Long Avenue. But until we get in there and see with that sewer, we don't have to put any paper.
Mike, could you find us twenty-three thousand dollars?
We'll take a look, see what we can.
So we'll have it there at the next meeting, we just gotta
We'll have to do something.
We do, we gotta do something, guys.
Sir. Attorney enforcement, you have a report on your back page? Richie is working.
Reggie or Richie?
Richie, Richie. I got it, man, buddy. I said his name off the top, I remember. Yes, sir.
I don't have anything.
Oh, come on.
I don't think I'm gonna be short. I don't have anything.
I will find out.
I will throw something in with the chief on the delineators. We should be, something forthcoming from the state as far as what they recommend or propose or something. So maybe by next meeting
And we're talking about doing them in two places, right?
Yeah. That's what we've sent in to them.
Yes, we got to acknowledge that they have received it, uh, it is being received by
Yeah, so hopefully by next meeting, we'll have a yes, no, or something.
Chief, I understand the bayers are back.
Oh, yes, they are. I hate one of my guests.
Went and ran through the school zone this morning.
Yeah. One more, next one?
Twenty-four, start.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Ghost on the Coast and Christmas Parade. We're having inquiries about it, people seem to be interested in it. Had someone in today inquiring about the Christmas parade. We still do not have candy that I'm aware of, and I think Commissioner Thursby's working on that.
I'm working on that, I think
I bought a hundred and eighty-five dollars worth yesterday. I got mine.
All right.
I was like, am I gonna be getting a report? So where'd I get that from?
Uh, well, you asked me to reach out to the chamber, I will be getting with them. But I think right now, we have our flat beds, we have an emcee, the mayor has agreed to emcee the costume contest for us that afternoon. Duke Energy's providing trophies for each category, so we're moving forward on that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer the moment.
What's the date on Christmas parade?
December the twelfth, five o'clock, and judging that starts at five fifteen, parade will roll out at six. Saturday, December the twelfth.
Ghost on the Coast, I notice thirty-first, but
Five o'clock is costume, and we're asking that no one start handing out candy until after the fire whistle has sounded.
Okay.
Saturday, December the twelfth.
We're trying to speed up the process this year. We got two, actually two flat beds, so we can get up two groups of kids at one time, so
I blame it on the ex-mayor taking up too much political, political time with us. You gonna be in the barrel this year, so.
I tell you, we have a lot of kids show up for this thing.
Great event.
Okay, and the next item was the lighthouse power. I am elated to share with you gentlemen that the U.S. Coast Guard is providing a light to go in the lighthouse.
Wow.
We have asked Mr. Hooper to remove what he has so graciously put up there for us the last few months. He will take that down Thursday when they open. Uh, Mr. Kennedy has offered to cook for the crew coming over to get everything going. He did some measurements today, made some pictures. They will be here Monday. We do have the full moon climb, thir, uh, excuse me, Tuesday night. We're advertising, the county is loaning us their flashing sign to put up, and we have the information on that. Mr. Kennedy did ask us to mention to them, there was three thousand dollars allotted to get the power to the site. It did not require but about thirteen hundred. There's some minor things that need to be done to cover, uh, the, what few items are needed as well as labor, and ask that we be allowed to expend the remaining part of the three thousand towards that. Need your approval.
I tell you this too, guys, if he's gonna be feeding them, and you feel like there'll be enough money in that for him to feed it, I mean, this, this is
He said he would cook for them, whether it's
Well, I mean
Boston bird or what. There should be maybe five of them coming over from the Coast Guard.
Shouldn't have told much money.
If y'all hadn't done that full moon climb, it's well worth it. It's a neat thing.
We had a workshop that day, so we need workshops over.
Yep, our ladies are gonna be open.
From seven till ten, first come, first served. It's ten dollars per person, but we do have
You think Bill would cook for us commissioners if we came out of the lighthouse? You gotta ask.
But we're, we're elated that they have worked with us on it. Um, it is the rear range light that used to be at Beacon Hill that they had to remove. So it's something that is native to us, and we're keeping part of it.
Good.
That's all I have, sir.
That's it? Uh, any citizens have you heard? Mr. Thursby?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple things, guys, I'm gonna talk to y'all about. At the boat ramp, we take these boat ramp fees in every year, and we use them for the boat ramp in that area down there. I'd like to see us, if it's okay with all y'all, for sharing any books, and I, we could have it around, everybody pick out what they think. But I'd like to see us spend about a thousand dollars of that money, and we should have it in there on some Christmas lights for down there at the boat ramp to add to the Christmas, the big nice Christmas lights like we have this season. Uh, we don't have the money in the budget to buy that stuff, it's pretty expensive. I'd like to see us maybe spend a thousand dollars or a hundred. Like you can probably buy two nice pieces for four seventy-five, five hundred dollars a piece. I'm a millionaire.
Put some, put some on the pier or something?
Something like that, I mean, I just think it'd look nice.
Have we got power?
If we don't have power, we may not be able to do that. We, we do have power.
There's power, then there's some
John having electricity.
Again, I didn't look at the place. No, that's that question, no, but I need to look.
Yeah, let's take a look at it. But if, you know, if y'all wanna do that, then a thousand bucks
Well, I would like to go ahead and do that, so we don't run out of time.
Yeah. We got that.
Yeah.
Also, too, one thing, I gave y'all the list on there, I saw on the news the other night with the TDC on Animal City Beach, I don't know if y'all saw that, was using, they got a program going, cause they wanna have Christmas on the coast. They'll match up to a thousand dollars for a merch, take a look at that and put it in your box. Maybe something real quick from the TDC to see if they can help some of our merchants. Cause every year, we get merchants that, you know, wanna do things, and Christmas decorations, y'all, we have bought that in years, everyone's just saying.
And that's what I thought, you know, I know we don't have the money, the budgets, but I thought, anybody, something that may be down there now, we might be able to move somewhere else, but this type of new stuff for down there, because we did make that agreement for down there. You know, that's what I'd like to do.
Stick into it.
Y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
Tom, it's not necessarily something having to do with all this?
What else you got?
And the other thing is, I just want y'all to consider, and I see this thing getting out of hand. The policy for the PDRB board, they don't have a pilot current policy.
I don't, I don't think that's gonna get out of hand. This was an unusual situation because it was a real simple issue. The PDRB, if, if they decide they wanna look at some issue, that's, that's within the scope of their power. But what they should do is say, all right, city commission, we want you to look at this issue. And then it's up to you guys to direct staff to do whatever needs to be done to look at that issue. If you, if they bring something to you, and you don't think it's something that needs to be addressed, then just tell your staff that we don't need to address that issue.
Well, you know, my thing is
We work for you
We don't, my thoughts, only one person though, PDRB board is not designed to bring ordinances to us.
It's designed to bring issues related to comprehensive planning and land development regulations to you. And to adopt an ordinance that, um, that addresses one of those areas, the PDRB is supposed to vote on it before, before it comes to you. The concept needs to come to you, and then you direct your staff to do whatever you think is appropriate. But, and, and what happened on this case is, we just, you know, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves, and that was my fault. But if the PDRB wants to send you an ordinance that says every building on Reed Avenue has to be painted blue, they have the power and the responsibility to do that. And then you can say, yes, no.
And I know you told me that, Tom, but I, I just, I, I don't know that all PDRB boards are in that way, are we? Almost to my degree, so I'm trying to be nice, but I can tell you that not all PDRB boards run that way. That board is set up for them to look over stuff that we send to them, or the building department, for instance. Not for them to go out there and search for stuff because their neighbor got mad. That's my only thought.
Okay. The PDRB has the responsibility to bring to you issues that are related to comprehensive planning.
You're trying to make me say why this thing's on this ballot tonight, aren't you?
No.
It's because of the swimming bowl.
There's not, I don't see an issue.
Well, I know, but I, you're doing elected, we talked about this before. I'm the one out there every two years knocking on the door, trying to get elected, make three hundred dollars a month. So the decisions and your thoughts are good, and I appreciate them, Tom, but you don't have to answer to those people.
Well, I think the way you answer those people, though, is the way you vote here. And, and that's my thing, they can bring whatever they want to us, they're an advisory board, we don't have to, it passes what they bring to us.
And it causes more ruckus. If that room would have been filled tonight, we could have been here half the night tonight, because they brought us an issue. That's not a problem. That's my only thing, that's all I got.
Commissioner Ashbrook?
I'm good.
Nothing, man, nothing there.
I got one little thing, Jimmy, we got Richie all, Richie, Richie all fired up, and getting his lots cleaned up around town, there's been several lots that have been cleaned up, there's two lots that come to my mind that have been told that they're going to clean them up, but they haven't been cleaned up yet. This would be over here by ET's on First Street, at Woodward, and would be Catholic Church, and if Catholic Church called you and told you that would be taken care of, that lot, but nothing's been done yet, so.
I think, I think Richie talked to him, I haven't specifically talked to him, Mayor, what I will do is find out where Richie's at, because they have a window, if they don't comply, then it goes on to the special master on the process on there, so if they not comply, it needs to go on the special master's, so it needs to happen, so.
Proceed.
For a year, yes, so I'll give a Richie a more...
Okay. Well, we're talking about that too, let's look at that lot, there, you and I went and looked at a while, but, that's up there.
Alright, I need a motion to adjourn.